I think we're ready.
All right, good to go.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Town of McCandless Council meeting for April the 26, 2021. We will have, we just broke from an executive session to discuss a real estate property, possible transaction for our executive session. So we would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and we can have council member Mike Terrell give us the pledge of allegiance.
Very good. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak, please put your name and your address in the chat box. So RJ can start getting you lined up during the public comment that we will be having after presentation. So you all have a little time to start doing that. Couple of announcements. The town is taking applications now for junior council member for 21 and 22, 2021, 22. So if you know junior or senior in McCandless that's interested, please have them apply. The Activities Committee also has an opening as well as the Technology Committee. Also, the local earned income tax deadline has been extended until May 17th because of the ongoing COVID issues. And that is all the announcements that I have. We have a few more announcements that I think will come out during the liaison reports, but that's all that I have for right now. So we're starting off our meeting with a presentation. Councilmember Swager, would you like to introduce your guest?
So with us, we have Dr. Yvonne Eaton-Stall and then we have Angela Kenbock from Slippery Rock. Let me try to find more of the papers. I don't know that, but do you guys want to go ahead and start with your presentation?
Sure. Am I able to share the screen?
Oh, you know what? We, we have had people sending presentations to me, but if you are an experienced screen sharer, we can make an adjustment on the fly here.
I am.
Okay, do not touch the recording button in the upper left corner, please. All right, you should be able to do it now.
All right, well, thank you for, for the opportunity. We were asked to just talk a little bit about program that we have going on at Slippery Rock that was pretty successful in Hampton Township Police Department. And so we wanted to share this with you in hopes that it might be something you want to consider in the future. So again, my name is Yvonne Eaton-Stall and I'm with Slippery Rock University. And also with me tonight is Angela Kenbock. She is one of the current police social workers that we have. And I just want to start off with a brief introduction about how this began and what our program is all about. We have a master's in social work program at Slippery Rock University. And that means that the students in this program already have an undergraduate degree of some kind. So there's sort of two ways that students get involved in the program. They can go for two years if they don't already have a social work degree. And what happens is they take a general field placement, which is like an internship during year one. And then year two, they take what we call our specialized field placement or internship. Students with the advanced standing who already have the social work degree like Angela, finish their master's degree in one year and immediately start off in a specialized field placement because they already have experience. So our master's program has a clinical specialization. So that means that our students learn how to diagnose and treat differing types of mental illness. And they have advanced coursework in a lot of different areas, some that are very relevant to what they do in police social work are listed there for you. Crisis intervention, sexual assault and interpersonal violence and mental health, of course. Our students are placed in the Field Placement Agency from August through April for a total of 500 hours, which is about 16 hours a week. And they have to have weekly supervision by a qualified, master's-prepared social worker. Obviously, in police settings, they don't often have a social worker on staff, although hopefully that'll be changing in the future. And then they receive site supervision from the chief of police or the designated sergeant on duty. They then develop a learning contract about what the township, the police department would like the interns to accomplish. And we'll tell you a little bit about how that worked in Hampton. And of course, they are evaluated along the way. And our hope is that communities see the value in this type of a situation, this internship, and then develop a position in the future. These are some of the roles that police social workers engage in, certainly providing crisis intervention, mediating disputes, for example. They sometimes accompany officers in a situation and can assist in the resolution of that problem. They also provide education. Recently in Hampton, the three police social work interns provided training that the officers were able to receive four hours of credit for in areas of crisis intervention, in particular, mental health, domestic violence and substance abuse. They also are very involved in the community. Angela is working on, working with some community members in Hampton and hoping to develop a support group for family members who lost loved ones from an overdose or a substance abuse issue. And certainly developing social work policies. Angela developed a very comprehensive resource guide that she personally made contact with resources in the community so that both the officers and herself can have, to be able to get people connected with services that they might need. Angela, did you want to add anything?
She might be muted. Let me see. Aha, she is. All right. So just an FYI, once I unmute you, you cannot unmute yourself.
Okay, well, if you guys hear my kids screaming, just bear with me with that one.
Message, that's okay, too.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Thank you, Dr. Stahl, for the presentation. You pretty much covered everything there. I think the only thing that you didn't really talk about was the, well, you mentioned it, but the importance of the documentation and paperwork in the beginning of the internship. So that was something that I had to put together to have the proper release forms and consent forms before working with any other residents within the community.
And what about hoarding? Did you want to say something about that also, Angela?
Yeah, I can. I actually, I started my field placement at Hampton Police Department in August. And right away in about middle of the December, middle of September, I started working with code enforcement on residents that are going through hoarding situations. So whether they're on the verge of being cited or their homes are being condemned. Myself and code enforcement worked together to come up with a plan that, you know, especially right now with COVID, it makes it a little bit harder to handle hoarding situations and get cleaning services in there. So what we're doing now is if those residents work with me continuously and check in with me weekly, whether that is meeting to talk about their therapy appointments, connecting with different services, going through items in their home. Their, whatever they're doing in the process of making progress in their situation, then code enforcement will not, you know, will not cite them until they stop making that progress. So with the police department, it is short-term counseling and short-term care is the ideal situation. So with the hoarding residents, I am focusing on getting them connected with service coordinators and caseworkers, whether that's through the Department of Aging or individual therapists to get them the proper treatment for those who specialize in hoarding. So I have about seven or eight residents that I have been working with steadily since September, October.
Thank you, Angela.
Sure.
And I think the, this last slide is just a picture of the percentages in terms of, you can see the majority is mental health crises that the police social workers have assisted with, followed by substance abuse, juvenile issues, working in the schools with the law enforcement officers in the school districts, domestic violence and hoarding. And then we welcome any questions and I have my contact information there if anybody has any questions or anything we can help with.
Does anyone have any, oh, councilmember Terrell.
Do you go with the police? Is this happens after they, you know, have a case? Like, when, when does the social worker get involved?
Right. So the social workers can get involved, sometimes going with the police on calls. They do not go into an unsafe situation, but if the scene is secured and they feel that the social worker would be helpful, they then come in. For example, if it was a domestic and they secured the scene, they may have them come in to meet with one of the parties while they meet with the other party, for example. But they get an awful lot of their referrals from officers on different shifts. So for example, when they come back from their call, there may not be a social worker right there at that moment. And they put a report on the social worker's desk and then they follow up to offer services to that family or that individual.
Then your, your one slide that showed all the ways you helped. I don't know, Carolyn, maybe you know this, but like what skills and what training does the police have currently in those, like what would be unique that police don't have?
Well, with, with social workers, they are certainly, they have advanced training in crisis intervention and they also have skill in assessment. So for example, conducting an assessment to determine suicidality or to determine if there is a mental health issue that needs hospitalization, for example. So they have special training in a variety of assessment tools that could be useful in a situation like that. And also, you know, the brief counseling, you know, police are in there for the crisis situation. They're very good at resolving the situation on an urgent basis, whereas the social workers can help, hopefully, get some things in place to prevent a future crisis, right, to address it more long-term.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I'm just curious as to, so it's from my, what I'm understanding is all of the instances where Angela or a social worker would be, working with our residents, would be initiated first by the police. Is there ever a situation where it goes in the other direction where one of our, a social worker would see something that needs to be addressed by police and work, you know, in the opposite way? Do those situations ever arise?
I don't believe they have, but I will say that Angela has worked directly with code enforcement, which isn't necessarily an urgent police call, right, that they have contacted Angela and they have partnered together in that situation.
I, and I don't know, maybe I'm interpreting your question a little differently, too, but there are instances where it might not be an urgent call. You know, as the community became more familiar with me being at the police department, there are residents who will reach out to me directly instead of it being a 911 dispatch. So they, I have my own extension at the police department where they can reach me. So there's, there's some residents who not, haven't necessarily been in a incident, but they can reach me at any time at the department.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you all very much. That was very informative. It's a, seems like a very, could be a very useful addition to the police department. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you all for having us and please, yeah, thank you for having us. Thank you.
This time for public comment?
Yes, I've got one person signed up so far, Marsha Caliendo. So I'm going to send her a mic and camera request now.
All right.
Oh, if I can find the video button.
Our video's not.
Oh, all right. Well, your microphone's good, so I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you have at it.
There we go.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. First off, I thought that was a very good presentation. And I hope that the town investigates that a little bit more. I think that, that is an important addition to our community. But I also wanted to talk about our semi-annual complaint of signs. And the signs that are everywhere in McCandless. And, you know, we do have an ordinance. Town council worked very hard and very long to get a fair ordinance. And, you know, we can tell people, don't put a sign up in a public area, but they're still going up. And I, I think before it gets totally blown, we have 39 quarter common police candidates. We have, you know, school board, we have town councils, we have, you know, so many races. I, I, I just would recommend that, you know, council abide by the ordinance, take down the signs, attempt to notify the people who are not abiding by it and make some money for the town and fine them. I think that is really the only way that this is, this is ever going to get, get fixed. So just, you know, there's just so many of them. And I just wanted to put my two cents in about it. Thank you.
Bob, did you want to address that at all?
Just wanted to let public know that our new code officer, Shannon Vincent, started today. And that was the top item on the to-do list as he was getting started. So we've, we've got him going on that already. In addition, we sent out reminders via social media today about the requirements on the, of the signage. We've been trying as we were able to have Public Works do some enforcement while about during the absence of having the code officer, but we are moving forward again with that in earnest, I should say.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I, oh, well, I was about to say I didn't have anyone else signed up, but Deb Sagan just sent a message. Can I make a comment? So.
Yes.
Yes, she can. Let me find her in here. Huh. Well, I don't see her in the, oh, there we go. Okay. Sorry about that. There are just a lot of people on the screen.
No, I just have my little flowers up. Just, this is to do kind of with signs. I, it's this public comment for anything. I take it now. So I had just become aware that the signs that we're seeing around McCandless that say, "I support McCandless Police Department", have been being distributed by the police and were provided by, oh, I'll start my video, an outside entity. And I don't know, I just wanted to bring that up. I, I think in a way that it sends the wrong message from our police department that if you don't have a police department sign in, and I certainly support the police. You, you guys have heard me talk, people have heard me talk about that before. My brother is a police officer. Many family members are police officers, but I wanted just to bring that up because I, I kind of find that, I don't know exactly the right words to use, but I don't think it's quite the message that we want to send. Oh, shoot. To our community. Sorry, I just got that message. My Adobe Flash is bad or something interrupted me. So I wanted to make that comment and I, I would appreciate if council would look into that at this time. And if you have any questions for me or would like me to comment further, I could do that. But I, I do support the police department, but I don't think I have to have a sign in my yard to say that. That was provided by the police department from an outside entity, from another source. All right. Any questions for me on that? From any council members or anybody?
Chief Hawk, Chief Hawk, did you have a question at all for Ms. Sagan?
I'm going to send him a mic request now.
Chief Hawk, did you have a question? I want to give you a chance to weigh in.
Well, ma'am, I guess I would, to answer Ms. Sagan's question, it sounds like she might already know, they were provided free of charge to us from one of the local, I think it's the McCandless Republican Party or something to that effect.
Okay.
And I would just simply say to Deb that, you know, we just handed them out as a gesture to anybody who, you know, wanted to show support for, for the police department. No messages, no, nothing political there. If council, you know, feels that they do know, they don't want us to distribute them any longer, they could certainly, you know, have that discontinued. I'll say that we have not had anyone come down for any recently and we don't have many left. And I think it's just like Deb said, it's just folks showing their support for the police department and one man's opinion and unbiased. Harmless support of your police department, you know, and they're out there to protect and serve. And I think at this, these days, they probably appreciate the, any little bit of support that they get.
All right, I, I understand that, Ryan, and you know I do. You work directly with me. So you know that I support you, but I just think that in this day and age, it sometimes is hard to interpret, you know, what, what those mean to some people. So I just wanted to bring that up. I appreciate you weighing in and that we could have a simple conversation about it.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other additional comments?
I, I have actually had two people sign up for public comment during Deborah's public comment. And I just want to, friendly PSA to everyone that tunes into our meetings. The chat box is just supposed to be for signing up for public comment and for troubleshooting. So if you are making a typed comment into the chat box, that doesn't count as an official public comment because it wouldn't if we were in person at a meeting. I try to leave it open, you know, for any tech issues, but just an FYI to everybody that if we start getting chat back and forth, I will set it so that only the host can see the chat. All right, that out of the way, I believe the next one that we've got signed up is Rita Martin. So give me just a second here and I will find Rita.
I'm right here. Can you hear me?
There you are.
Okay, great. I'm just going to support what Deborah said. I agree that those signs can be viewed as divisive. If you don't have a sign in your yard and somebody else does, the police are amazing and I support them totally, but also support the fire department and EMS department. And we could have signs for all of you and it's the same love. I just think that they can be viewed as divisive and I, I don't think it's necessary for the department to pass them out. Somebody else wants to, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. You said one more comment?
Yes, I've also got Irene Caliendo. And Irene, when I unmute you and bring you on screen, I just need your address, please.
Irene, you're on. Can you give us your address, please?
Okay, it's 411 Haug, H-A-U-G-H, Drive 15237. I just wanted to ask a question. Do those signs stay anywhere that they're supplied by the Republican Committee?
I don't, I don't understand the question. What do you mean?
There's nothing on that sign.
Okay, all right. I just, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Say Republican Committee. I see what, I'm sorry, misunderstood. I apologize. Okay. Anything else, Irene?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, well, we, I got one more sign up.
Okay.
Now from Ramona Nelson. And Ramona, when you come on mic and or camera, we need your address, please. Oh, we don't, we don't have you unmuted yet. Sorry, I just sent you a mic request. There you go.
Okay, thank you. It's 2058 Carriage Hill Road, Allison Park, PA, 15101.
Thank you very much.
And I only want a comment also on the, the signs. I wonder if town council might take a look at the whole question and provide some sort of guidelines because I think it makes it difficult for the, the police to have to decide as people might come in with these signs, there might be other signs, there might be other gifts to the police. And, and other questions, other concerns about whether they're partisan, whether this, you know, how, whether this can be seen in divisive ways for the community. And I, I just wondered if town council might take a look at the question and say, do we need some guidelines that the, the police aren't left, you know, an individual policeman isn't left there as someone comes in to make that decision with no, no direction, no support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Sergeant?
That is the end.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Moving on, we have the minutes that were submitted to each council member from April 12th of 2020. Were there any additions or corrections that need to be made? Okay, is there a motion? Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Okay. Counselor, respond. Hold a second. Okay, Councilmember Swager. Okay. Again, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the minutes as submitted indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes are accepted. Liaison reports, Activity Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Report is in your packet. And I just want to remind everyone tuning in with us this evening that we are still looking for an Activity Advisory Committee member and we have until May 13th. I strongly encourage anyone who's interested in getting involved with recreation, cultural type activities in our town to please contact me if you have questions or any of the committee members. Also, I want to let everybody know to be on the lookout for our garden party where we will be asking folks to send in photos of their gardens in bloom. And we hope to put it together, another nice video like we did with our Christmas light or holiday light show. And thank you. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Trish, how are we doing on our report regarding the gaps in our town programs and available facilities?
They, they have been looking at facilities, but there has been a very, just a halt to the investigative work, to be honest with you, with so many folks, whenever the call is being made. Nobody knows what their limits are and so forth from one week to the next. I'm hoping that changes this year, but right now there has not been much activity getting a, a good list together, to be honest.
Okay. Any other questions? EAC?
Thank you, Madam President. The minutes of the last EAC meeting are in council's packets. I would just mention that the Capstone, the Capstone students have been wrapping up their projects. And in fact, they, they did their symposium presentation to Pitt on to Pitt on Saturday or Friday, Friday, I guess. And we have, they have arranged to record that so that at this juncture, I will get that out to all of council. When those videos are complete and we may or may not decide to have them, you know, one of the team leaders appear at a later meeting. That's to be determined, but I hope when we do receive them, you all take the time to watch them because it's excellent work they've been doing. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any questions? Great. We look forward to seeing that. The Heritage Center?
The meeting minutes are in your packets and I believe they're the draft minutes, but I don't think the approved minutes will, will change significantly. And if you have any questions, let me know.
All right. Our junior council member was called away for a family emergency, so he was not available, but he does have his report that has been submitted to council members. McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority.
Thank you, Madam President. Quite a bit of information was included in council's packets. So if anyone has any questions that I might be able to answer, that's fine. I just wanted to mention, I think there is going to be an event on May 19th with Senator Williams and Representative Bucuri with town representatives and all of the five communities that are serviced by the MFPAA. And hopefully that will be, get lots of good media coverage and will be a good kickoff to their capital campaign, which is a very important. Any questions?
Congratulations to the, for their grant for $10,000 that they got from the ACEMS. Working together with Ross Westview and Shayler Hampton. Good teamwork, got a nice grant out of that. That's, that's great. That's, that's a, that's a good, good way to move forward. Any other questions? The ambulance authority. Okay, MIDA had no meeting. So sanitary authority?
The minutes are in your packet and if you have any questions, let me know.
North Hill Council Governments, I believe there was no meeting. Okay, Public Library?
Again, the meetings or the minutes are in your packet as well as the executive director's report for March. And two things I'd point out is that they, the library did get the second PPP loan. And that the, the, which I think I mentioned before, the situation with the front patio is worsening, so they're going to be doing work on that coming up sometime. You know, that's a, that's a big project, so it'll take some time, but just so you're aware, that's on the horizon.
Any questions for councilmember Smith? Okay, Personnel Board?
You guys have your meeting, the meeting minutes on your packets. The only thing I would like to note is the next meeting is going to be this Wednesday, the 28th of April, 1 o'clock.
Terrific, thank you. And that will be recorded, so if anyone can't make it, you still will be able to, to view that. Any questions for councilmember Slager? Okay, the Chamber of Commerce?
I made contact with Beth Machine and Heather Schwartz Power. They're sending over their upcoming meeting dates, so I will attend the next one.
Terrific, thank you. Planning Commission, the, all the notes are in your folder. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to take those. Technology Committee?
These in your folder. And I also want to mention that we are also looking for a new member, so please do apply if that's something you'd be interested in.
Any questions, counsel, for councilmember Woods? Okay, Volunteer Firefighter Steering Committee did not have a meeting. Zoning Hearing Board?
Thank you. The minutes have been presented in your packet and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, all right, hearing none. Ad hoc committee, the Stormwater Management Committee?
As far as the committee goes, I only update the minute or the, the report about once every three or four months. So you had in a prior packet, the most recent report. I think Mr. Grimm, you would agree that our next step is to review, review the review that Gabe Wade did of the former PVE recommendations for updating the stormwater ordinance.
That's correct.
So we will be getting together with, with Mr. Grimm and our engineers to try to move that along and probably, and we'll be setting up a meeting of the committee very shortly as well.
And I would like to add that there'll be an excellent article coming out in the McMail come next week with, or the, the end of this week on stormwater management.
I also saw that the COG has a watershed implementation plan. That's very exciting. I applaud a global approach since it's just not one municipality's problem. And we're all interconnected. I really think that that is going to be a very good approach for all the COG members to work together to try to deal with this problem. So I was, I'm very glad to see that. Anything else on stormwater? Grant writing?
I mean, I can just speak to this just briefly that we have not met together as a group. And as many of the individuals that are part of this committee are also putting a lot of focus right now into our community day planning. I personally will be doing that, quite a bit of work with that, but definitely grant writing. I would love to get more community involvement and possibly have the AAC help with this as well, too.
So were we, where were we with that? Were we with putting out RFPs for that or where, where are we with that?
I would say we're still just researching what, what is working well with other communities and what kind of, I guess, what kind of professionals and, and how the fee structures would be and how it would make sense because many do this as a, a fee, some do it as a percentage. And so we're trying to figure out the best approach if we do decide to go down that route.
Okay. All right, well, we look forward to hearing about that. Police Community Engagement.
Well, so Ryan and I, we didn't get to meet the other week. I can't remember what happened. It fell through, but we will be meeting on Wednesday of this week to review the Police Academy proposal that they put together.
Okay. Okay. I also noticed that the ambulance authority is looking at establishing an external communication hotline for citizen comments. This might be something that the police would consider partnering with them. Maybe share the idea, share the expenses of having a communication, emergency communication hotline for citizens that would like to make comments or have complaints. Just an idea, since they're looking at that, that might be something that the, the police might be interested in partnering with, just something to think about.
Okay.
Any, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, um, reports and correspondence, not really much this week. Town managers report?
You've all received a copy of my report. I just wanted to highlight a couple of items quickly. One, work will begin shortly on grouting the culvert under Brittany Place to prolong the life of that structure. You'll see daily closures of Brittany Place as a result of that while the work is taking place. And one lane will remain closed during the evening. So there'll be some inconvenience to the residents in that area, but it'll be a long-term benefit to that culvert. The other thing I just wanted to bring to your attention was the item that I had written regarding small community events. Staff has been looking at the possibility of putting on some smaller events that could be draw smaller crowds than what a normal community day would have drawn and may focus on specific either times of the year or matters. Two items that we are proposing is trial balloons, if you will, for this year would be a national night out against crime in August and one closer around the holidays between Thanksgiving and New Year and Christmas. And anybody who has any questions or ideas certainly can, can reach out to us.
Would that be taking the place of Community Day?
In this case, this year it would not, but Community Day will be scaled back quite a bit. So this will be an opportunity for a few other interactions with the public.
Any other comments or questions from the managers report? Was there anything else you wanted to add, Bob? I should have asked that first, sorry.
No, no. Any, any questions that you have regarding any item, feel free to, to reach out to me.
Town Attorney's Report?
Evening, everybody. I submitted my report. It was part of your packet. As always, happy to answer any questions or, which may be more appropriate to answer them in executive session or individually as you review the report. Thank you.
All right, old business. We've had our checklist of bills. Is there a motion to approve the checklist?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Councilmember, Councilmember Terrell. All right, the motion is to approve checklist number three dated March 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2021, billing $973,445.12. Although, any questions at all about the checklist? Comments, questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Checklist is approved. We have a preliminary and final land development plan that is for us. RJ, do you want to start with that or?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just going to queue up the project manager as well in case he has anything to add. But in general, you know, sort of overall, there is a staff report in your packets regarding this development. There's a list of the modifications that have been discussed previously regarding some of the landscaping and the rain garden design to allow for that. The biggest departure from what we've talked about before is we were originally considering this land development application for the new residential facility in tandem with a simple subdivision for a property, a piece of the property that's in the northeast corner of the Sisters' overall campus. Due to some of the information that came to light during the, the engineer and the applicant's research on the Cumberland Road frontage, or lack thereof, we now know. Because that information came up, they just need to secure an access easement with UPMC who owns that tiny little parcel in between them and Cumberland Road. It's my understanding that that's almost complete, but just because we don't have the documentation yet, we've split the simple subdivision. And the new building approval into this motion and then the simple sub will come back later. So if anyone has any questions about that, happy to answer them.
RJ, quick question on the UPMC land there. So the, my understanding is on, on that side of the road, because of where the road is located, that's actually UPMC's property? And how wide is that strip on that side of the road and is that entirely within the right of way that the town has for the road or does it extend past that?
So I, I don't have the exact number. I'd have to pull up the plan and, and try and eyeball it. Maybe Mr. Hamp has that off the top of his head, but to answer your other questions, it's not entirely within the right of way. This, I think, is just a particular quirk of how the road was sited when Cumberland was originally installed, for whatever reason, instead of going in between the two properties or deeding over that little portion of UPMC's property that ended up on the south side, it just was created as a separate parcel. That parcel actually wraps all the way around to the east and is, you know, part of a larger portion of land over there as well. So that's not within the right of way. The right of way, well, I should, I, before I say, let me take that back. I should, I should look at the plan to confirm exactly whether it would be within the road right of way. But for our purposes, technically, because they don't have any frontage on Cumberland, that affects how we would review the zoning and the subdivision design of the plan.
RJ, if it's helpful, I can share a very quick graphic that will illustrate this and may add some clarity to that.
Yeah, that would be great, actually. You now have the ability to screen share.
So this graphic here illustrates in yellow, as far as the proposed subdivision parcel one that will remain and showing our proposed development. Parcel two in orange is the proposed subdivision parcel. And then in green, you will see is the strip of land that is just to the north of the Sisters' property. And you can see that, that abuts the south of this Cumberland Road right of way line. So that green strip that comes across is right in between the Sisters' northern property line and the southern right of way line of Cumberland Road. So to answer one of the previous questions about the dimension of that, it actually varies depending on, you know, where you are along Cumberland Road and that alignment. It actually does change to some degree along that, so it's not this dimension, but you see very clearly there is a separate parcel from that right of way that was dedicated for the roadway.
So how wide is that? I'm trying to look on here and see, and, and I realize it's smaller than some places and larger than other places. So at the smallest area, the smallest, because we would like to have sidewalks there. So is there, the question is, is, is there enough of the UPMC for when we ask them to put in sidewalks or would, will that, they need to have a little bit of the sidewalk on your property, too?
Not sure. Just as a reference, in this area over here, you can see that, you know, this dimension from the property line to the sepet line, that's 30 feet. So that could be anywhere, you know, roughly 10 feet, which, you know, depending on the dimension of the walkway and any separation from the roadway, whether it's either right along the edge of the road, whether there is a grass strip in between, there is certainly be enough width for the walkway. I think it comes down to exactly how that walkway is engineered. So at the, at the, this is probably one of the thinner areas there. They'd have to take a look at that. My guess is that it's probably wide enough to fit a four foot wide walkway through that. I don't have that exact dimension, but based on this being 30 feet, my guess is that's probably doable through there. Just a matter of their engineer laying it out to see exactly, you know, how that alignment needs to work through there, but it's probably sufficient to make it work.
So RJ, would this be the time, since they're already working on an easement with UPMC, to have some discussion about sidewalks there in case they need to share some responsibility in some of those places or is this the time to do that?
If, if that's something that council wants to direct, we can certainly pursue it. It would not have to be hand in hand with the land development approval. That would just legally be a separate issue. But we could certainly, you know, extend the contact and, and have the conversation now.
Is that something that other council members would support? I think that's a great idea. Since, you know, all of this is happening right now and they're already talking about the easement that they're going to need since they've newly discovered that all this property isn't theirs, that to move forward with getting, then we'll have sidewalks on two sides of this property. Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, Madam President, you read my mind as to where. Yeah, Madam President, you read my mind as to where my questions were going with that. So that's yeah, I mean, so I just didn't know if, you know, if, if the town could secure an easement there. So that, you know, if we wanted to put in a sidewalk, we would have that ability to do it. And RJ, I understand what you're saying, that that's, that's a separate track. But
It wouldn't be our sidewalk to put in. We would not be putting in that sidewalk. That would be UPMC putting in that sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. Other, other council members, what are your thoughts on that? Would you like to direct our land use administrator to pursue that with UPMC? Can I get some nods?
Quick question. Just in terms of requirements per code is, you know, does this set the precedent that we decide, well, you know, we think, you know, Joe's auto body should have a sidewalk now or what? Or is it just because we are looking at this, this land for some other purposes right now? Is there something in our, our rules or regulations that say that they have to address this at this point?
Bob, were you able to find the agreement that UPMC had with the town to supply sidewalks?
I have not been able to find it yet. Still looking.
Okay. Okay, I have been told and council has been told as long as I've been on council that UPMC has said that when the town wanted sidewalks, they would be glad to put them in, that we just had to ask. Now, I've not seen that, but I have been told that many years by Toby and Bruce both. So Bob is in search for where that might be to see if we have it in writing. Otherwise, we'd have to see what the agreement was, but that is that's the reason I bring this up, because they said, when we want them, just ask for them. And we're like, okay, we want them. So we're going to see how that works. But you're right. It wasn't just willy nilly, hey, you put a sidewalk in.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Terrell.
UPMC already has a sidewalk there, don't they?
On the other side. On the northern side of Cumberland, but not on the southern.
Did they put it there in lieu of putting it on a little strip? Do we know that?
I'm not aware. They would have been required to place one on that side of the property where they're along their front edge. As part of their, any site improvements that they would have made. But that, some of that predates, well predates me. So that's part of what we're trying to find in the, the records.
And that would include on, on Babcock too, I mean. So any other, any other questions? Councilmember Woods?
Thank you, Madam President. So I, I'm a little unclear. Really, UPMC is not going to have any building improvements on the south side of Cumberland. Right? It's just a tiny strip of land. They're not going to develop that. So to me, that wouldn't trigger them ever having to put in a sidewalk on that side of the road.
Their word was whenever we wanted sidewalks to just ask them and they would put them in along their, their property.
But didn't we just discover that this was UPMC's property?
Yes. The sisters thought they owned all this. That's why when we asked them to put a sidewalk in, they were saying, well, there's a pipeline there, but this is just right, Tim, right?
Correct. Between our last visit to council and tonight, we were able to verify that there is that strip of land that is a remnant from when before Cumberland Row was there, the northern property line of the sisters just butted the hospital. And then after, you know, later, later after the hospital was developed, as it continued to develop, Cumberland Road was constructed with the right of way through the property. And that's really the reason why there's that small strip of land that results there. So that, that is new information that we have come across and investigated since our last appearance before council.
And if council's against this, we don't have to do it, but if indeed they said that and we want it, then we could ask for it now. But I think looking at it might be a good idea. Any other comments or yes, have RJC about it? No, don't? What do you, what are you all thinking?
I think you should have the conversation for sure.
Okay.
Well, if, if possible, track down whatever agreement there is out there. I mean, if there was an agreement to do that, then then, you know, for sure, but you know, hopefully, hopefully that's something we can track down.
All right, that's only three council members. Is there anyone else that supports it? If not, then.
I'm, I'm 100% for sidewalks, but I want to make sure that we are requiring them per our code and not making exceptions. Just want to make sure it's, it's a equal distribution of the request. If they have said they'd put them in, I'd love to see them along Babcock as well. If UPMC has agreed to that in prior conversations or in writing, I would love to see that.
Yeah, yeah, just to be clear, I, I want to see what the agreements are. You know, I'd, I'd like to pursue at least finding out what that was. So I'm in 100% agreement with, with Councilmember Clunin.
Would agree with Councilmember Clunin as well as if it's in writing, have them do it. If not, we just can't go around and say, now it's your turn. It's your turn. It's, it's, it's your turn.
Agreed. Okay.
Sounds like I've got my research.
All right, yeah, that's, that, yeah, see what you, see what you and Bob can dig up. And I think it's worth looking into, you know?
Will do.
Okay.
Do you have a question? Madam President. This, this might be a detail, but I understand why you separated the subdivision approval from the requested approval for tonight because of the access agreement issue between UPMC and the Good Sisters. But should council decide to vote to approve this land development plan tonight? Shouldn't it also be contingent on that agreement being completed? Because there are existing access points that, several of them, I think, that go from the existing property by the new, by the, by the new structure to Cumberland Road across the UPMC property.
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure if that's directed at me or Mr. Hamp, but I'm, I'm going to take a crack at it. So there are already access easements to the existing sisters' property, from what I understand. The reason that this came into play particularly with the simple subdivision is because it needed an acceptable means of access directly to the street. Mr. Hamp, if you can chime in on any existing access easements from Cumberland to the property?
Sure, there, there, sure, I'll, I'll share my screen again.
I mean, that's fine. I don't need to see the picture again. I just thought I understood that we never, no one ever realized that that was UPMC property. So if no one knew that, I don't know how there would have been pre-existing access agreements. That's all I'm saying.
Right. Again, as part of the research that we have done since the last meeting, there is where there's, there's an existing curb cut that exists along Cumberland Road on the south side. And that is where there already was and is an existing 50-foot access easement in place between UPMC. So the subdivision access easement further down to the east, that'll have to be a new easement that gets drawn up for that access to that parcel, for that to be approved.
All right, thank you.
So the question that I had with the, with the modification that you wanted on the unpaved potential future parking space, was that included in the stormwater calculation if that becomes impervious space?
Yes, it is. It, yes, it is.
Okay.
Yep. As far as the, you know, everything related to the storm system, all the calculations, everything has been designed and formulated, assuming that in the future that will be paved and can be handled if, 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 if that does need to happen.
Okay, and, and that's, that's already been calculated and, and included in your, what you're building. Okay, perfect.
That's correct. If I may, just before we, we move on, there is one other item that I did want to just highlight and show council. Following the last time, we did take another quick look at the sidewalk along Babcock. If you recall, there was a, three different options we had looked at previously. And based on the conversation, I'm having a hard time. Can you guys see my screen at all?
I can see your desktop.
Which, which, what's, what are you seeing exactly?
The ocean. Seeing the ocean.
The ocean, okay.
Beautiful beach.
There we go.
Can you see it? Can you see a walkway plan now?
Yes, yes.
Perfect. Okay, sorry about that. It's a little bit not working exactly correct on my end. Anyway, just wanted to follow up on this last item. If you remember, we had three different options that were shown previously. And based on the conversation with council, the preference was for the walkway along Babcock to be located, you know, a little bit back from the roadway edge, but to be still, you know, somewhat close to create, you know, more of a meandering walkway along the general frontage of the sisters' property. And also for that walkway to be fully ADA accessible, which means less than 5% as far as the grade. So what this graphic represents, and I will scroll through and pan across slowly. But this is an updated sketch that shows not only the walkway alignment that we would be proposing, that's colored in the, the brownish grayish color, but you can also see in red the proposed grading or topography changes that would be associated with creating that fully accessible walkway. What you're probably going to notice is that in some cases, there, there are a few red Xs which indicate where there are some trees or small vegetation that needs to be removed because of the earthwork that has to be moved around and in some cases fill brought in to create those slopes necessary to accommodate the walkway. But in general, that walkway alignment, you know, works pretty close to what we had noted before and showed last time to council. We did tighten up the alignment in a few, few areas. We are going to make sure that as the walkway crosses the existing driveway with the sisters, we're going to make some modifications to the driveway there just to make sure that crossing is not too steep. Both going across it and from side to side. So that will also require a little bit of modification to the driveway with the pavement, but nothing too significant. But we want to make sure that as that walkway does cross, that will be still, still be maintained fully accessible. Again, the walkway will continue to wind and meander, gentle curves, bending around some of the existing trees. And then we'll eventually start to, again, as we showed last time, get a little bit closer to the lake where we do have a little bit of a drop off. So we're going to have that walkway a little bit further down close to the lake where it's flatter. And we will put in some sort of split rail fencing to provide some additional separation and safety for people walking through there against that lake edge. And then it will eventually start to work its way uphill back to the existing crossing that's in front of the other sisters driveway. So as far as the overall alignment, we still believe it certainly is feasible to work. And generally, you know, if council is acceptable or is, is good with this and accepts this, then this will essentially be the alignment that we proceed with for more detailed engineering and permitting as need for, for HOP as well as anything else with NPDS. And of course, eventual construction to go along with the rest of the projects.
And this will make it ADA accessible, correct?
That is correct. It's engineered to be less than 5% slope along the travel path, which meets the ADA regs. Unfortunately, it's, it creates, you know, it requires to add more fill, which is going to be probably a little bit more challenging. That's why you're losing some of those trees, but that's, that's the trade off essentially to make it, you know, work grading wise, you know, we're trying not to have the walkway go so far back into the property that it really becomes, you know, out of the way and, and, you know, too indirect from where the, the path of travel like wants to be. So we believe this is probably the best solution for what we're trying to achieve here.
Any comments from council members on this?
Quick question.
Councilmember Smith?
In the, in the lower right corner there, the way that walkway ends, will that allow for a, a crosswalk across the second drive there?
There actually already is a crosswalk there now. We're, and there is also a concrete pavement area that's there now on the edge of the road. It would essentially just be tying into where that is now. So
Oh, okay.
That's already in place. All we're doing is once we get, you know, basically behind the curb line and pass this little bit of concrete that's there now, the new walkway will then tie in and connect to it right there.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I just couldn't tell when it was zoomed out, but when you zoomed in, it looked more clear. So thanks.
Understood.
Any other comments from question, questions or comments from council on this walkway? Tim, I think you guys did a great job on a kind of difficult situation of, you know, complying with, you know, what we wanted and making it even nicer. You, that, you did a nice job on this.
Appreciate that. You know, and we, you know, and we, we appreciate the council's willing to work with us on this because we do think that from a pedestrian experience, this will be a much nicer way to walk along their front edge as opposed to next to the road. So
Absolutely.
Appreciate your willingness to work with us as far as this alignment.
Absolutely, but it's close enough to the road that I think the public will feel comfortable taking it also and not feel like they're all up in your property. That's the other concern that I had. So I think this is a, a good compromise.
Good.
Okay, did we need to talk about any of the other modifications?
I just, I wanted to ask the question of, I can't on my computer, but do the utility, your current utility designs provide for relocation of the sanitary line around the storm basin?
Bear with me one second.
I think that may have been on the engineer's report, Tim, that.
So one of them, we were able to route around. There's another one that right now is still going underneath one of the rain gardens, but we've been working with the sewer authority as far as that design and the requirements that they're asking for. So it's being engineered and, and the alignments are being designed in a way that will meet all the requirements and standards that the sewer authority is asking us to adhere to. So from a safety standpoint and alignment, it's, we still think it's probably the best solution. And we're just waiting for a final approval from the sanitary authority as far as that location.
Thank you.
Any, any other comments or questions about any of the modifications or just about the plan? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to approve or reject the plan. Would someone like to read that?
Adam President?
Yes, Councilmember Smith?
I will move to approve the preliminary final land development application submitted by the Sisters of Divine Providence located at 9,000 Babcock Boulevard, block lot 827-n-338. Contingent upon all items being addressed as identified in the planning and development staff report dated April 23rd, 2021, and town engineers review letter dated February 24th, 2021. Plan approval includes approval of modification, modification requests number one through number four as identified in the attached staff report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Councilmember Swiker?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, um, second chance, any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the final and preliminary land development plan indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Hamp.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
We'll see you back on, here in two weeks.
All right, under new business, a resolution authorizing the, Bob, do you want to just give us a little rundown on that?
Sure. We received notice from Pennsylvania Department of Transportation that they are in the process of updating their traffic signal maintenance agreements with local municipalities who are responsible for handling that maintenance. Upon review, one of the key elements of that updated maintenance agreement is the need for the town to undertake periodic inspections of each of the signals that we have. We will create data that we have. We will create databases to report, be able to report those conditions to the state. And then we'll have to have game plans in terms of addressing those needs. So in other words, being very blunt about it, this is a, an unfunded mandate from the state in terms of work that needs to be done. Much of will be staff time to do the inspections, but we, if we find any kind of structural issues, we would need to bring the engineers in on that. So what we need to do is we need to approve a resolution authorizing the appropriate officials of the town to enter into the revised maintenance agreement with PennDOT. And then Jeff Shademan and I will be working with our staff and as needed gateway to be able to make sure that we are providing the information to the state that's necessary. Keeping in mind, we have 27 signals that will be reviewed periodically and reported on. It's no small undertaking on our part.
Plus, we can apply for any grants regarding signaling unless we sign the paper.
Exactly.
And then there's, and then there's that.
Then that's the trade off. That's the trade off, right? It's like a take it or leave it agreement. And if you don't take it, you don't get grant money.
Not only do you have to do it, not only do you have to pay to do all of this work, but you won't get any money from us if you don't.
But besides that, it's completely optional.
Yeah.
Governments working closely together in perfect harmony.
Any questions for Bob on that? Okay, do we, can we just take a vote on this or do you need to?
Motion, a motion to approve the resolution would be.
Okay, all right. Can I have a, a motion?
I moved.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Woods, second.
Second.
Robert Clunin. Okay, all right. Last chance for questions on this. All those in favor.
Oh, we're certainly, I was going to say, we're certainly available to answer any questions that you have after the fact.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um, I know we're always looking for things to put on our website. I thought that TSAMS information sheet was kind of interesting too. Bob, maybe we could just kind of put that out there so citizens kind of know, you know, what we're doing and.
Yeah.
What we have to do.
Yeah, I think they did a nice job of that.
I thought it, I thought they did too. I thought that would look good on some of our media.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, um, discussion regarding the credit on the income tax for volunteer firefighters. Now, this is retired volunteer firefighters that do not pay income tax.
Yeah.
That are requesting relief from real estate tax.
Yeah, they, they, if you don't mind, I can just kind of pick up on that.
Please, please do.
Okay. Several of us had been approached by volunteer firefighters who are retired from their former employment and stated that they are not getting any kind of benefit similar to what other firefighters are with the earned income tax credit. So they were asking for consideration of including a provision to provide a real estate tax credit, similar in nature to the earned income tax credit. The program would work the same. They would have to meet the same criteria as those who are receiving the income tax credit. And so the chiefs would sign off on their volunteer efforts each year. And then we would include that credit against their real estate tax if we went that, in that way. So other communities are considering something similar. I did a little bit of research. It appears is if we would have at most 11 firefighters from the three different departments who would qualify for the credit. Currently, the credit for earned income tax is $500. Each, doing some math, you know, obviously that's an extreme max.
It's not really 500 though. I mean, it's based on your income.
Yeah, it would be a maximum of five.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's not a standard for everyone. It's a maximum. And, and what does your earned income have to be to reach that maximum? Do you know that?
$100,000.
Okay, all right. So anyone making less than $100,000 would pay less than that 500. I just wanted to clarify so that everybody didn't think it was a straight $500 across the board for everyone.
That's correct.
All right, go ahead.
So, um, because I didn't have anything else to do, I did, I ran some numbers on the potential impact, looking at the median home value in McCandless and our current mileage rate. The, it, it's likely that a firefighter wouldn't pay more than about 300, $300, $305 per year or get that kind of a credit each year through this program. So likely cost to the town would be around $3,300 per year. And that to me, I think probably would be on the high end. We, we know of a couple of specific valuations on, on properties and it comes in much less than that. So, you know, I'm, I'm thinking that the actual credit that we would provide would be somewhere between $2,200 and $3,300 a year.
So would we make it a standard amount for the, for all of these people? Or would it just be based on their property?
It would be based on the, I, I, the way I would recommend it, and Steve, please chime in if, if you have anything else to say, but the way I would recommend it, it would be based on their property valuation. It would be for the town tax only, and it would not exceed that same level of five, well, it can be any number that you wish, but I wouldn't go beyond 500.
I think that's generally correct. You know, you can set the number up to 100%. There was an amendment last year up to 100% of their local town tax bill. And you can choose a number of flat fee or you can choose a percentage that is less than 100. It's completely within the council's discretion.
What are you proposing, Bob?
I'm proposing that we keep it at a flat fee, just in the, the wild event that you end up with a volunteer firefighter that has a million dollar home. Wouldn't necessarily want to provide a thousand dollar credit.
Okay. Councilmember Woods, did I see your hand go up?
Yes, Madam President, I was just going to ask, we could make it based on what Mr. Corbin was saying, 100% up to $500, right?
It, or could, or you could say 100% up to 250. You could set any rate you wanted.
Okay.
Yeah. Or, or you could do 500, right? Whatever. Councilmember Smith?
Do we know, I guess my concern would be giving a retired volunteer firefighter a larger benefit than fire, volunteer firefighters who are still working. So if you have to earn $100,000 to get the full 500.
No, but if you, if you earn $60,000 a year, you get a $300 benefit.
Right. No, that's what I'm saying though, is, is so, you know, I don't think what I'd want to do is say 100% up to $500 because that's based on property value. So that, you know, that retired volunteer firefighter is getting a bigger benefit than somebody who's earning, you know, $45,000 a year, say.
The current language in the ordinance that provided for the earned income tax credit says that the volunteer who has been certified shall be eligible to receive a tax credit up to $500 of the earned income tax levied by the town. So what, what Steve was proposing would be, to me, similar in nature to that language.
So David, let me, I want to just make sure, when we talk about retired firefighters, we don't mean people who aren't currently firefighters.
No, no, I understand. So.
Okay, okay, okay.
Or is, is if, let's say you have a volunteer firefighter who's in the last year of his job and he earns $50,000. His income tax credit is going to be like $300 or $250. And then he retires. And then because he's retired, the next year that benefit could be $500 based on the value, you know, whatever the value of his property. So basically by retiring, he's increased his benefit. So that, that's just where I, I, that's where I'm having kind of a problem in my mind thinking, you know, I, I don't want to penalize the person who's still working with a lesser benefit purely because they're still working. It, that seems counterintuitive to me.
I think that's a real possibility. Councilmember Terrell.
Can someone define retired? Is it retired from their full-time working position, what they had for their career? But they're still volunteering? Is that, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
You're correct.
Okay.
Right, okay. Yeah, I took it just as they don't have earned income to, to offset the credit against.
Right, 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 right.
So in truth, the only way, I mean, Bob can calculate however he wants to using property values and everything, but really the only way to make this equitable is would, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm not suggesting it, but would have, would be to add this provision as a flat fee number and convert the existing program for people who get the earned income, you know, calculation to change them to a flat number as well.
I think that would be a very fair way to do that. I, I, I never liked the sliding scale before because you, the more money you earn, the more tax break you got. And I, I, I never liked that when we did this before. I wanted it to be a flat rate last time we did this. I, I think that's an excellent idea and I think that's a fair way also.
I, my opinion is that it has to be, it's, it has, if we choose to do it, it has to be equitable. And I don't know how Bob and his calculations are ever going to truly get to equitable, no, no matter how hard he tries.
Right. If, if we're, if we're using a, a year-to-year salary or a property tax valuation, it will never be equitable. Or, I mean, the, it, the odds against it being equitable are probably more astronomical than winning the mega millions.
Right.
I had a simple question, Bob. Is social security earnings taxable?
No, they're not.
They're not?
Not from a local.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I agree with, with President Zachary, especially because when you consider this, the, the time when your credit is the lowest is probably the times in your life when you need it most. It's, but you know, if you are volunteering your time and you have a family, et cetera, and you're at the beginning of your career, you're going to be lower than someone else who's been in their position for a long time or something. So I, I would be in full favor of a flat rate for all of our volunteers in our community.
Can then I make a suggestion that Steve and I look at all of these, or think through all of these comments and discuss them. I want to make sure that by, by working towards what you would like to be able to do, that we don't open up ourselves to any other kind of a liability if we're providing some type of a stipend or credit or whatever you would want to call it to the volunteers. So let, if, if you don't mind, then let Steve and I put our heads together and we can get back to you at the May 10th meeting on this.
Do I have some nods on that? All right, good, good. I think that's a very good solution. Okay, all right. Last but not least, I promised to bring it up periodically, and it's now periodically, that to discuss what we want to do with our meetings, if we want to still stay in Zoom, if we want to go to in-person meetings, do we want to do some type of hybrid? So I wanted to just bring that forward and see how everyone felt about it. Bob sent some good information on what the current recommendations are. I would not be comfortable going any looser than those recommendations. I wouldn't want to be responsible for, you know, anyone getting sick because we, you know, weren't careful when we've done such a good job so long. So I'm interested to hear the recommendations. Our room holds between 28 and 30 people. If we do the six feet distancing, everybody would wear masks. We have the option of a hybrid people. You know, a lot of things have changed and I am of the opinion, and I found nothing in the charter that indicates that it is not, would not be supported, that in the past, when council members weren't physically present, they, they just weren't there. They went on vacation, if they were sick, if they had to stay home with their kids, they broke their leg, whatever. But I think these are different times now. There's now, you're not allowed to vote by proxy. That is in the charter and I'm not suggesting that. But I am suggesting that I think it might be more open to different individuals if people with young kids, older people who weren't comfortable driving at night to participate if we still had some access to Zoom. I know when I go on vacation, if I decided that I wanted to attend the meeting, you know, to have that option. So I would like us to keep some of that, but I want to hear from you. I want to hear how you feel about our meetings. If you want to hang like this for a couple more months and see how it goes. June seems to be some kind of magic time that I keep hearing people talk about or, or what, what? Let's hear from you. What do you think about our meetings? Yes, Councilmember Terrell.
I'm for resuming them in June. A quick Google search said the PA Senate is, has extended their sort of remote voting until the 31st of May. So we would some, we would be sort of, you know, following what, what they're doing.
So would you still support if there were individuals on council who said, you know what, I'm not comfortable meeting in person, maybe I have a health reason. I wasn't able to take the vaccine because of a health reason or for whatever reason, still attending the meeting by Zoom?
I'd probably be open to the public attending the, the meetings via Zoom much more than a council member, but I would probably be okay with that for a short period of time until, you know, things settle down.
Okay, all right. Anyone else have some comments? Councilmember Smith?
I mean, I, I agree with that, except for moving forward. I, I think, you know, I think remote participation in any meetings, not just our meetings, just meetings in general, is going to kind of become a permanent thing. And it drives, to me, it drives more engagement. You know, and I think, I don't know, it might have been, it might have been you, President Zachary, or it might have been somebody else. I think somebody had suggested, you know, like maybe a model where half of the council is in person and the other half can be, you know, like a rotating thing so that if, if citizens want to come in person, they can do that. If they still want to do by Zoom, they could do that and it would give council members that flexibility as well. You know, as an example, I, I've worked remote for years, but my company, because of this, they've realized that a lot larger percentage of the people that, that they have working for them can work remote than, than they previously assumed. And so, you know, like the video conferencing and stuff like that isn't going to go away even after everything returns to normal. And I think that's going to be kind of a new normal.
Bob has also purchased, or the town has purchased, Bob didn't buy it, the town purchased some equipment so that we could do hybrid meetings. So we have that equipment already in play. Bless you. We have that in place already. So we even have that option. We wouldn't even have to really do a lot to, to do a hybrid meeting. So Councilmember Woods?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I think I recommended earlier as, as a means of try to get some people back that we do like odd wards, even wards or on a rotating basis. I'm not sure if that's necessary at this point. I agree with Councilmember Terrell's recommendation that, you know, we set a target date of June to get back in person. But I, I still support having as much, you know, if we have a council member who's not comfortable being there, that they could still dial in via Zoom. And I think we should try to maintain this hybrid format indefinitely. I think you get a lot more people, you said, who maybe don't want to drive at night or et cetera, whatever reason that they don't want to come into the council meeting who can, who can watch and participate from home. So we have the equipment. If, there will probably be some hiccups as we try to get it, you know, working out, but I think that that's the direction that we should be going.
I like that flexibility. I like having that flexibility too. Are there other comments? Councilmember Clunin?
I just want to say, I, I also am in support of trying to get the council together in person with the availability of having virtual options for our residents or council people, like you said, if they're on vacation or if they have to be out of town for something, certainly it's a lot easier to sign in for a couple of hours if you're at a conference or something like that. I think that's a great option.
Okay, so, um, Councilmember Terrell mentioned June and talked about our state senate working toward June. That would give us a little time to kind of get things organized a little bit. Do you want to shoot for working, getting the quirks or getting some of the tails worked out? Bob, is that give enough time for us to work out something for, to start in June?
We, I've already talked with the IT people. We're going to run several drive do several dry runs. I mean, we know that the, the system works technically. But we have some mock meetings to make sure that
Sure.
the interaction occurs the way we would expect it to with the technology. So we'll start doing that. If we run into any kind of a hiccup, I'll certainly let you know. But the nice part about it is that we have an extra week built into the schedule between May and June. So that buys us a little bit of breathing in our testing.
Well, and we can set tentatively for the meetings in June. If it doesn't work out, we can make it the second meeting in June. We're not under the gun at all. I mean, we've been doing this for a year and a half, almost.
I, I don't think that we should have any issues, but if we run into them the first, during the first test, I'll certainly let you know.
Okay, okay. All right, all right. Are there any other comments about the, the, the meeting comment at all?
And there may be some questions that we raised to you as a result of our back and forth regarding things like public speaking. How are we going to handle that? Are we still going to allow chat? West via Zoom in person?
Right, right.
What are we going to expect out of the present, presenters like this evening?
Right, right. Right. Yeah, I, I think it's a new time. I think we're going to have to be creative. I think we're going to have to be flexible.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
Out of curiosity, how many people attend the meetings now as opposed to pre-COVID? Because I wasn't involved in council pre-COVID, so.
It depended on the, how many were here tonight? What did we say, twenty?
I think there were twenty six or something.
Yeah.
Including us.
Right, including us. So many times, there were a ton more than that. And it depended on how controversial things were. Or if it was something that involved a particular neighborhood, then you have like a lot, that, a whole, you know, a neighborhood come out. But I would say there was more. When I first was on council, there would be like three people. And then as we got better communication and started kind of getting the word out about things we were talking about, we got more and more. So I think overall we had more people than we've had on Zoom. Zoom's really intimidating. I'm telling you, I wouldn't be doing this if I didn't have to, if I didn't have to learn it for council, I'd never be doing this. And I think a lot of people feel that way. So I think it's.
If anyone is curious, the most that I ever had to wrangle at once is somewhere between fifty and sixty.
Okay, so now that's a full night in the, in the room.
Yeah, yeah, that, I mean, that was for things like
Chicken.
Some of the more, you know, controversial zoning stuff that we've had come through. So yes, super fun for me.
Okay, so, so that's a lot. That's a lot, but yeah.
Well, we will shoot for that. And I'll keep you guys informed.
Is there any other, I think that's all I have. Any other new business? Okay. All right then, is there a motion to adjourn?
They'll move.
They'll move.
Okay.
Second.
Councilmember Spahnhals, Councilmember Smith, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.